To call the Select Board meeting to order for Monday, May 13th, 2024.
Let's just hold on one second. Can you get that for me?
Break into a dance. And as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the Chair prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, I'd like to ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'll go to Megan and Ed on the review and approval of the municipal bond results.
So as you know, we have retained our AAA bond rating through S&amp;P. And tonight, we have lots of paperwork for all of you to sign. Ed Spellman, our interim treasurer, is here to give an overview of the process and what it means and what you're signing.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ed.
Good evening. What you have before you would be a vote to accept the results. And what the town went out and bonded for was $6,855,000. Made up of five different bond issues. It was $1,417,000 for a sewer interconnector and planning phase two. $1,417 for the sewer, Cold Brook. $149,000 Pleasant Bay watershed. $3,777,000 for the West Harwich Route 28 main replacement. And $100,000 for the East Harwich wastewater collection system. A question was asked about the bond issue. The bond was done competitively. We received six competitive bids. The lowest and the one that was awarded was at 3.6424%. And the highest rate for the sixth bid was at 3.788%. And then a question was asked about the total interest payments over the 30 years for the $6.8 million bond would be $4,138,200. Don't know if there are any questions or...
Any board members have any questions? Seeing none, we'll just go ahead and go forward with the vote?
There is a...
Script.
And there's a script for Jeff to...
Right.
Wait, wait a minute. That whole thing. Everybody sit down, I got a lot to say.
With every further.
It's not that bad.
I have to read all those numbers?
You can refer to this.
I mean, as proposed?
As proposed.
Numbers as proposed, okay. All right, here we go. I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Harwich, Massachusetts, certify that a meeting of the Board held May 13th, 2024, of which meeting all members of the Board were duly notified and at which quorum was present. The following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the Board in my custody. Voted that the sale of the $6,855,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2024 bonds of the town dated May 22nd, 2024, to Fidelity Capital Markets, a division of National Financial Services LLC, at the price of $7,189,979.42 in accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on May 15th of the year's in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows, as you can see as presented. Further voted that the bonds maturing on May 15th, 2049, and May 15th, 2051, and May 15th, 2054, shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as follows, as you can see presented. Further voted that the connection with the marketing of the sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of the notice of sale, and preliminary official statement dated April 25th, 2024, and the final official statement dated May 7th, 2024, each in the sum form as may be approved by the interim town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the interim town treasurer and the Select Board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver the continuing disclosure undertaking and compliance with SEC Rule 15C-12 in such form as may be approved by the bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the interim town treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the interim town treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds and to comply with relevant security laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents relating to the bonds may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be effective as delivery of a manual executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purpose of the documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the Select Board, the town clerk, and the interim town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, and other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, in quotes, in parentheses, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building, that the office of the town clerk is located or, if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR29.032B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remains so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with General Law Chapter 30A 18-25 as amended.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
Could Jeff repeat that?
I missed the second paragraph.
I make sure you guys all got that right.
All in favor? Five zero.
Okay, so all of these need signatures and...
With the blue pen only.
With the blue pen only. So I will pass them. I'll disperse. Let me take a pile. I'll start at the other end with these.
I feel like they're gonna converge on us.
Okay.
Do I sign this one?
You sign that one.
Great. Thanks, Megan.
Okay, so I can go on to... We've covered A and B at this point.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Could I ask, now that we're onto our regular business, did we take a moment, a moment of silence to recognize the tragic passing of...
Yes, I was gonna...
Trooper Stephen Culver?
Yes, I was gonna say that when we were going to public comments and announcements, but we can do that now. So we should ask everybody to take a moment of silence in remembrance of Trooper, State Trooper Stephen Culver. Thank you.
Thank you.
On that same topic, we will have some road closures due to the funeral procession and wake, which are scheduled this week for Wednesday and Thursday. Main Street will be closed for a portion of both of those days to facilitate the activities. So more to come. We will be doing a regroup message and more messaging on our website to let people know how to maneuver around if they need to be in town during those times.
And when do you anticipate that being posted to the website, Megan?
Tomorrow afternoon at the latest.
Great.
We're just nailing down details.
Thank you. Phase three wastewater contracts? Well, I know everyone's signing, so...
That's okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we vote to award the phase three sewer project contracts to Robert B. Hour Incorporated, Contract 1E, with all three bid alternatives in the amount of $21,389,513.75, as well as Contract 2W, with the first two bid alternates in the amount of $9,896,128.05.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, any comments? Don?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a caution to the public, because this keeps coming up at every town meeting, whenever you take a vote for debt exclusion or for borrowing, it doesn't immediately show up in your tax bill. It takes probably a couple of years normally before we actually finish off the bond obligations. So everyone needs to understand that, because this is yet another thing that hasn't hit your tax bill yet and will not hit your tax bill for a while.
Thank you, Don. Any other board comments? All in favor? Aye. Five zero.
I move that we authorize, I move that we vote to authorize the town administrator to sign notice of award documents for the construction projects, construction contract documents for the construction projects, as well as state revolving funds related to documents for the state revolving funds funded construction projects.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Five zero.
Thank you.
So why don't we take a minute to just sign those documents so we know that they're complete, and then we'll go to public comment?
I didn't, Michael and I could not find where to sign on that.
Okay.
There's only about 30 of them left.
Yep, there are quite a few. And I'll put them back together and double-check them before the end of the night.
Yeah, I don't think we signed them right.
I don't think...
Yes, and there's a second one, just so we have a second copy. I'm on that one, it's the same.
Right here?
Yeah, it's the same one. Thank you.
Thank you.
I knew they'd all come together.
I can continue to sign, won't we?
Public comment, right?
Yeah, I think we can go it out. Public comment and announcements. Do you guys have any specific office hours?
I'll just start by saying, thank you all for being here, and I will be in the next day or two securing my next public office hours for the Select Board. Michael McCaskill and I will probably be there, both of us, but we'll pick the date shortly and get it to the public as soon as we pick it and secure the location and the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else for a public comment and announcement?
Good evening, Bernadette Waystack, Chair of the Harwich Cultural Council. I had left for all of you the very colorful invitation and just wanted to spread the word in as many ways as we can to the public in town, too, to save the date of Thursday, June 13th, from 4:00 to 6:00 at the Cultural Arts Municipal Building. We'll be having the annual grants reception for this year's grant recipients for the cultural council grants. And if I may, just two quick other comments. First of all, thank you to the town for their support at town meeting. Not every town or municipality in the state gives supplemental monies to their LCC, but Harwich does, and we appreciate that very much. It just goes back to those in the community by benefit of what we can do or what the grants can do for the citizens of the town. But also, I just thought, on the heels of town meeting, it's a good idea to clarify something. Now that we've established a cultural affairs department in our town, I think for some folks who are newer to town and don't have historic background on it, the LLCs, the local cultural councils, are mandated by the state by the Mass Cultural Council. The Select Board appoints them. We're actually a town board or committee, and we precede the establishment of the cultural affairs department. That being said, we do collaborate with the department and the director, and we do everything we can to support the newly established cultural districts in Harwich Center and Harwich Port. But I think that was just maybe something worth clarifying for everybody, but mainly tonight, just hoping that everyone would come and join us next month and save the date for June 13th. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernadette.
Good evening. My name's Karen Bajukas. I live on Rainbow Way here in Harwich. I want to thank you for allowing this opportunity to speak with you today. I'm here tonight as the chairperson of the MLK Action Team, the racial justice advocacy arm of the NOSAT Interfaith Association. I know that you're familiar with our work with Police Chief Gilamet in our conversations with Police Task Force, which was awarded a humanitarian award this year from the Bonstable Human Rights Commission. I'm also here as a member and in partnership with the Cape Cod Chapter of the NAACP. I'd also like to note that there are several other residents here tonight, Harwich residents, Marietta Nielsen, a member of the NOSAT Interfaith, and a resident of Harwich is here, as is Reverend David Purdy, and Angie Chalak, a longtime Harwich resident, MLK Action Team member, and recent Town Harwich Hall of Fame inductee, sends her regrets that she's not able to join me at the podium but is with me in spirit. My reason for joining you this evening is to ask, as the governing body of Harwich, to join with us, the MLK Action Team, to help promote a better understanding of our newest federal holiday, Juneteenth, by taking some or all of the suggested following measures. We ask that you consider publicly posting in our town hall and other public town spaces a brief history of Juneteenth. I shared a suggested one-page document with you via our earlier email communication, which you're welcome to use or edit to your satisfaction. We also ask that if you will be posting notices regarding work closures for that date, that you include historical information about the holiday with those notices. We ask you also to follow Bonstable's lead and fly a Juneteenth flag at town hall or town park for at least part of the actual, for at least the actual date, June 19th, or better still, for the weeks surrounding that holiday. We believe that each of these small measures will help promote community conversation and education about the holiday. Historically, many members of our community have been marginalized, and even now, across the country, there are movements to dilute, ignore, or deny the difficult history for Americans of color. We hope that you will take these small suggested steps to help us move toward our goal of making the Cape a kinder, more equitable place for all residents and visitors. We thank you for your consideration of these ideas, and we look forward to Harwich partnering with us on these or other diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging initiatives. If you would like more information about our work as the MLK Action Team, you can visit our website, which is www.nosatinterfaith.org. If any of you are interested in furthering this conversation, you can reach me through the earlier email that I sent to each of you, and I would welcome the opportunity to talk with you further. We look forward to learning of your response to these suggestions, and we thank you for your time, your attention, and of course, your public service. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the information, and we will get back to you with any further discussion.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, Emily Mitchell, Town Clerk. Just coming with a brief reminder that our annual town election is next week, Tuesday, May 21st. Polls will be open at the Harwich Community Center, full hour, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and that is for all four precincts in the Town of Harwich. We do have a sample ballot available on our Town Clerk Department page of the town website, and a physical sample ballot posted outside our office in the hallway here at Town Hall. Folks have any questions about how to vote, they're welcome to contact us anytime.
Thank you, Emily. And thank you for all your help last week at town meeting.
Hello, good evening, thank you. Patrick Otten, East Harwich. First of all, I do want to say thank you for last week's town meeting. Thank you very much for having citizens petitions at the top of the meeting while people are still present and awake. We did have a pretty good act of discussion of two-plus hours over all those citizens petitions, and I really appreciate it, the placement on the ballot, so thank you, or on the warrant. However, I have a comment, and that is, part of what I received or heard was that process and procedure for citizens petitions were not followed, that meetings and public forums are not sufficient, but requires a public hearing, that the citizens petitions must be vetted. There were three citizens petitions, which were direct copies of prior towns' citizens petitions. The request for home petition has already gone through the legal procedure. It's now before the House of Massachusetts for consideration. The bylaws had already passed and had been signed by the Attorney General, but yet, I'm told that the citizens petitions that I was presenting were not properly vetted. So I'm very concerned and confused as to why that argument was present for the citizens petitions that were presented.
So, just not to interrupt you, but I think, I think what you heard at town meeting, if I heard the same thing, which was not that specifically anything was done irregularly, it was that everybody there talking about having a vetting process wanted them to be fully vetted by the town versus them being petition articles. That's how I heard it. Instead of voting on something that didn't get through every department and to review in terms of our own department heads in town and making these decisions to adopt these, that more vetting, the people wanted more vetting to happen. I don't think anyone was telling you, you did something wrong.
I submitted all citizens petitions on, what was it, February 16th or 19th? They were before the public, they were here, they were present, so...
You did, you met the deadlines. That's what I'm saying, Patrick. I think maybe what you're, what I'm hearing from you is you think you did something wrong or irregular, or did not follow a process. What I think town meeting was telling you and others was that, in terms of voting on these, they weren't comfortable doing it as a petition article, they wanted input from the town. So the Select Board did not have any kind of meetings on it, on the various items. The only thing I think we talked about really in any small way was the pool, because we've already had discussions on fertilizers, pesticides, and the pool was changed in terms of your ability to ask a question of whether or not anyone wanted a pool, not about funding the pool.
So I did submit the petitions to you. I did attend your meetings in which you were reviewing articles on the town warrant. I also personally held three public forums, and they were dismissed as not sufficient, but that the statement was made that I have to have a public hearing. How does one individual have a public hearing on citizens petitions?
So, I'm gonna go to Board Member McCaskill first.
Patrick, thank you for being here. The debate on town meeting floor wasn't the Board of Selectmen, wasn't the Finance Committee. We took our positions ahead of town meeting. So the debate was people in town saying that they wanted more information. So you had your group that was there that supported it, there was another group there that did not support it, and the fact that they asked for a public hearing was so that they had more information. Things like, that have been important to me from the beginning. Things like, what's this gonna cost us?
Fertilizers will cost you nothing.
Nothing, doesn't cost us...
A penny.
In your opinion.
Sewers cost you how much?
Hold on, let Board Member McCaskill answer.
And pesticides. Who are we gonna have to, and the cut-and-paste tree moratorium was making our planner, who's already taxed, the tree warden. So there is a cost associated, and the people that debated that against you, Patrick, those were their concerns, some of their concerns, I won't speak for all of them. But you can't have a public hearing. What town meeting said was no to your articles, because they didn't feel that they understood what the ramifications were, or they just didn't support them.
You know, I went to the planning, and I went to conservation, and I was told by both the directors of both planning and conservation that they could not speak to me about this.
Well, because they're petition articles, and nobody can tell you how to write your article.
They, I was not asking how to write. I had already copied them from prior towns, word for word, identical to what other towns had passed, and I was told by both conservation as well as planning that they could not speak to me.
But did you ask to have any kind of conversation by going to be put on an agenda to talk about your petition articles?
No.
Well, that's what I think you need to do, is go to conservation, go to planning, talk about the articles. That's the way that they can decide if they want to have a public hearing on those subject matters.
All right, well, we'll move on. I just have a final comment, and I'm very sad that it reflects the state of Harwich, that a youth was not allowed to vote, and that was supported by you folks as well.
You mean speak? Are you talking about the Girl Scouts?
Yes. Very sad comment on the state of Harwich.
So, again, not everybody voted against that.
It's still a sad comment.
Well, I agree with you, so...
All right, thank you.
Anybody else for public comment and announcements?
Good evening. My name is Dave Callahan, and while I'm a member of the Real Estate and Open Space Committee, the questions and comments I'm about to make are my own and have not been discussed nor endorsed by the Real Estate and by the Real Estate and Open Space Committee itself. What I saw, when I saw last week's agenda for the community preservation meeting, I noticed there was to be a review of the Judah Eldredge acquisition. During the public session of that meeting, I raised a number of questions with the thought that there would have been someone from the administration to address them. Since there was no one from the Select Board nor the administrator, Town Administrator's office, to answer my questions, I have chosen to speak here tonight in order to see if the questions I'm about to raise could be addressed in an upcoming board meeting, Select Board meeting, or some forthcoming report. Let me state that I fully understand and appreciate the implications to our bond rating with the removal of this overly large tax due receivable. I'll talk a little bit about it in a second. My questions are more concerned with the timing and funding of this acquisition. Question number one, why did it take over five years from the approval of the May 7th, 2018 town meeting, until the filing of the taking that I saw, I found that the registry of deeds dated July 19th, 2023? Two, how much was expended in legal fees, genealogical research, deed research, and survey costs? Were these costs added to the tax lien, and if not, from what operating budget account was the money taken from? The assessor's database shows that the current assessed value of that property is $701,800, not the $396 that was approved by town meeting in 2018. I'm assuming that the $701,800 is the minimum amount that must be placed in escrow for the three, for... the three, for three years to satisfy any future claims from any potential errors, because that's really the assessment at the time it was filed. So, where was the remaining $332,800 coming from? And what was the source? Was it approved at town meeting? Most important questions, however, revolve around the taxes due on the property. According to the latest tax lien list that I have, which is dated August 18th of last year, there were $708,161.14 in taxes due at that time. That exceeds the amount that's to be placed in escrow. Will the back taxes be paid from the escrow account, thereby completely draining it? And if so, is it needed, and most importantly, is it legal to use conservation restricted CPC funds to pay taxes to the general fund when the town has the ability to write off the tax lien? These are questions, some of these questions were ones that I raised in 2018 at town meeting that never got addressed. The town has gained a very valuable piece of property in lieu of those taxes, and I think using the escrow account to pay back taxes would be double-dipping for the town's operating budget, in the, in the fact that the town receives both land and tax dollars, tax payments. Finally, if, if they're not doing that, if they're not using the tax dues and the escrow still remains at the end of the three-year escrow period, how much can the CPC expect to have restored to its conservation fund for use towards future acquisitions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your questions, and I would, excuse me, I would say that in terms of answering your questions this evening, Joe Powers, the Town Administrator, is ill this evening, so he's not here, but we will follow up and get answers.
I wasn't expecting an answer tonight. I just wanted to make sure.
No, I know that, but I mean, in any, in any other reference, so, so I'm just letting you know that obviously we'll follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Anybody else for public comment and announcement?
Julie, real quick?
Yep.
So just want to announce the River Herring Celebration. It's going to be at the Bell's Neck Conservation Area, West Reservoir Fishway, Off Depot Road. That's going to be May 19th, next Sunday, 10 to 1:00. And we will have Mass Division Marine Fisheries and Harwich Conservation Trust there, and staff biologists with DMF and HCT will be present to discuss the life history of river herring, the cultural history of the herring fishery, and the natural resources of the conservation area. So next Sunday, 10 to 1:00, Off Depot Street at the Herring.
Thank you, Mike.
And then just one more, just wanted to recognize Mr. Dixon, the Montemoye Civics and Government Teacher, who just received the, is receiving, but was announced the American Lawyers Alliance's Teacher of the Year Award.
That's awesome.
We're still on public comment and announcements. This has happened more than once, I'm just going to put it out there. We have to figure out a different way of listing the Finance Committee. It is not one of our committees. It is selected by the town meeting through the moderator. So, while we have a liaison to it, it's not, it's kind of confusing to say the Select Board Committee vacancies.
Yeah. We can maybe make a separate section, but would you just...
Want me to read through?
Yeah, the public knows.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a list here of Select Board Committee vacancies as of May 8th, 2024. Bike Ways Committee, we have two vacancies. Brooks Academy Museum Commission, one. Conservation Commission, one full and two alternate. Council on Aging, one. Finance Committee, which Select Board Member Howell has made it clear that that's not a Select Board Committee, but there is one vacancy. Harwich Accessibility Rights Committee has three. Harwich Energy and Climate Action Committee has three. Harwich Golf Committee has three. Historic District Historical Commission has two. Planning Board has three. Traffic Safety, one. Treasure Chest, one. Waterways Committee, one. Voter Information Committee, two. Youth Services, looking for one full and one alternate. And Zoning Board of Appeals, two alternates.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Onto anybody else for...
And before Carolyn gets up, I'm going to also add that in, in the packet is the Citizens Activity Vacancy Form, so if anybody listening at home would like to apply, please do so. It's in the packet.
And it's online.
And it's online. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Yeah, was that? Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. I just wanted to let you all know that the ferry doors are placed around town, and you can pick up your packets to find their matching ferry wings located throughout town buildings, inside and outside, but they are available. We had people waiting first thing this morning to pick up the packets, so...
They're here. Thank you. Very, very good to hear. Also, the candidates for, we have May 21st, 2024, I'll just read it. Here from the candidates for Brooksbury Library Board of Trustees, Tuesday, May 14th, 5:00 p.m., Griffin Room, Town Hall. Bring your questions and join us. This is moderated by the League of Women Voters of the Cape Cod Area, organized by the Harwich Voter Information Committee, and the event will be recorded for later viewing. So we'll go on to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the Town Administrator's recommendation to grant permission by Verizon New England Incorporated and N-Star Electric DBA, Eversource Energy, to relocate one jointly-owned pole on 158/10A on Archibald Circle in Harwich, Mass.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
If I, if I could, and I know, I know Mr. Powers isn't here, but in the, in the material, it talked about one of the abutters who brought forward some concerns.
Yep.
And, and I believe Joe outlined that those concerns would be brought to the various department heads. Did that, did that occur?
That did, that did occur, and I believe in your packet is a memo from our zoning compliance officer.
From Rachel.
Other department heads were also...
Other department heads were also made aware.
Okay. And then, I guess my question, assuming what I, I read from the abutters accurate, is that the addition already occurred?
Apparently it has already occurred. They will be looking at permits after the fact through the Building Department and possibly zoning relief as well.
All right. I'm inclined to vote against this, probably on principle, to be honest with you. I'm not sure that the proper process was followed, and I don't know that you come to us after the fact because it's an inconvenience, but my opinion.
So I think we're dealing with two, two issues, right? Obviously, we're dealing with permitting and...
And right now, it's, we're strictly dealing with the pole relocation.
Right.
Understood.
Yeah.
I think some of the other things that occurred regarding permitting have, have led to this request.
Yeah, I wouldn't disagree with you, but, sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
No, no, go ahead, please.
Oh, okay. But at the same token, in terms of the utility pole, it's not owned by the property owner.
Correct.
So, I guess I'd, I'd look to you, Megan, in terms of the different information. When I read through it all, basically, the utility is saying, we can do this and we can move it, and back to the other curb cut issue as well. You know, that zoning, they may need to go to zoning to get a special permit. If, if they can't get that, will they lose the curb cut?
I, I believe so.
Yeah, right.
To speak to your concerns, there is a possibility that this could drag out without someone stepping in and denying something like a poll hearing. On the same token, our regulatory staff is on top of this now, that they've been made aware, so they are going to follow through. So either way you choose to go would be beneficial. If you choose to deny it, they'll have to come back eventually, and it would, it would prompt a faster response to get into compliance, in my opinion.
Okay. Anybody have any other?
That was my, my question.
Yeah, it would, it would force them to act faster if they want to get this done.
Okay, so it would be more beneficial to Pete's point?
Yep, and you could, you could either deny it or postpone it.
Postpone it, right.
Continue it for a further date.
Mm-hmm. Is there any feeling the board wants to either deny or postpone? I know we haven't...
I was willing to deny.
Okay.
I was as well.
So was I.
So, well, so we, so we need to go back.
No, because there's a motion to approve.
I withdraw my second.
Right, the motion to approve, so...
I withdraw my second.
You'll withdraw your second. Okay. So we won't take any...
We won't take any action.
We won't take any action. So then it's just, there's no action.
They'll, they'll notify Eversource, Verizon, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Don, go ahead.
But Megan, if you could just convey what Pete had said, because this wasn't just that we're delaying it, there's a reason.
Right. You want, you want action done on, on this. Sure.
In the right order.
Got it. And then B, item B?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we approve the Select Board meeting minutes from April 29th, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Jeff?
Yeah, I think Mr. Sutton should be Mr. Sutton.
Sutton Finn.
Sutton Finn. So I would just ask that that gets corrected. Other than that, they look fine to me.
Yeah. I was going to make that comment. Okay, so we'll approve with correcting the Sutton's spelling.
So they can hear this. S-U-T-P-H-I-N.
I-N, right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero. Now, we have a presentation. We have an update from District Attorney Robert Gallaboy. Did I say that correctly? I always...
Thank you. Permission to approach that little light reading material for when you get home tonight.
Thank you.
That's the first time anyone has permission to approach.
Thank you.
Permission to approach, hello?
Hello? Town Clerk?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I promise not to go on for more than 10 minutes. I'll try to keep it closer to eight. Thank you again for allowing me to come in and give this update this evening, and I appreciate you giving me this chance last year when I came in, and I kept that one under 10 minutes. So there are four topics essentially that I'd like to highlight for your consideration. The first surrounds human trafficking. And human trafficking was something that quite candidly was not on my radar screen when I either campaigned for the position or first took office. And how we got here was shortly after I was sworn in, beginning of January of 2023. I went to an event in Hyannis sponsored by an outfit known as Cape Cod Path. It's People Against Trafficking Humans, and essentially it was a presentation by a survivor. Her name is Jasmine Grace. I walked into the coffee shop, I think it was a Tuesday night, in the middle of January, freezing cold, as you might imagine. About 20, 25 people were in the room, and there was one other gentleman, big guy, strapping blue uniform, having to be the Chief of Police for Orleans, Scott McDonald. So we listened to the presentation, which was quite compelling, and a couple days went by, I went down to Chief McDonald's office in Orleans just to ask him, what were you doing there? And he mentioned to me that he was on a mission. He was looking to set up a task force within law enforcement to get every single police department on the Cape to commit an officer to human trafficking investigation efforts. I was struck, and I was inspired. And while some, I have a colloquial caption or, or name of being top cop for the Cape, I don't have the powers of arrest, and I can't really go out and do the things that the chief is able to, so I thought, what can I possibly do? So we launched a civilian human trafficking task force within the office, and people from Cape Cod Healthcare, Health Imperatives, Independence House, My Life, My Choice, came down to basically weigh in what their interest is regarding human trafficking and help our office promote awareness. Shortly after that, I got with our Cape delegation team, and I asked for a little bit of a bump up in the budget, and I'm going to get into that as my fourth and last topic for the night. But I was successful in getting a little extra funding, and we were able to convince a woman by the name of Vanessa Madd. She worked in the Attorney General's Office in Boston on their human trafficking unit. And we convinced her to come on down, leave the bright lights of Boston, set up our human trafficking unit prosecution team. She joined last summer, if I remember right. So one of the first things she does, besides building a prosecution unit, she and another woman in our office named Danielle Whitney, Danielle is the Director of our Community and Programs and my press person, and they applied for a grant, a grant that is offered every single year by the Massachusetts District Attorneys Association. The pot is a million dollars, or was a million dollars, and the ceiling for any DA's offices was $100,000. There are 11 DA's offices in the state. This office had never applied for the funds before. So we get the paperwork, we start filling it out, we notice something at the top of the page, the pot is $450,000. They cut it by more than 50%. So now we're competing with 10, 11 other DA's, or 10 other DA's offices for $450,000, or basically trying to get our $100,000. We were successful. They gave us $97,000. What did we do with it? I mentioned My Life, My Choice. My Life, My Choice is an outfit in the greater Boston area. It was founded by a survivor from human trafficking, and they didn't have a presence at all down here on the Cape. They work with adolescents and teenage survivors from human trafficking. We gave them $50,000 out of that grant. Now they have a presence here on the Cape, and they're working across the Cape and the islands as we speak. We gave another $10,000 to the Independence House. They work with the adult survivors of human trafficking, and the balance of which we've been using for trainings for both our law enforcement partners as well as staff. From there, we've continued on going on, pushing the awareness piece of it. We've been on a tour, going across the Cape, YMCA, Community College, Department of Children and Families, Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority, Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce. What we've been doing, and I come with three asks tonight, none of which are going to cost you a dime, is that we came up with a QR code. There's a hotline in that QR code, and some other information, and hopefully, beginning next month, you start seeing our QR code at the back of taxis, on the C-CRTA vans, in the back of bathroom stalls at many restaurants throughout the Cape. And again, this is just our way to try to reach potential survivors. The data suggests that it takes six attempts for a survivor to leave the life, so we want to try to permeate the Cape as best we can with as much information as we can to try to reach those survivors. Moving on to the second topic, we created a new position in the office as well. We have a Chief of Vulnerable Adults and Human Rights. Her name is Courtney Scalise. We were very fortunate to get Courtney. Courtney has a very unique background. She was a prosecutor in New York City in the Bronx for a while. Then she went to Guam, where she prosecuted major felony cases, and then wound up outside of Baltimore in Anna Rundle County. Why all that movement, her husband is in the Coast Guard, and they're originally from Massachusetts, and they're making their way back now, so she took a position with our office. And the reason why I wanted to highlight her was in terms of her effort for human rights. We've had, when I first started this, these presentations about a month ago, three high-profile incidents, but now we're up to four regarding human rights. Last summer, some of you may remember, we had an incident on Main Street Hyannis where a restaurant or bar owner approached an individual, the bar owner being white, and the individual approached being African-American, saying a lot of hateful things, then actually assaulting him, and we present, we indicted him subsequent to those acts. That was our first of high-profile cases. The second one occurred in, on Martha's Vineyard, in Oak Bluffs. We had a white supremacy group come down and tack signs on top of telephone poles outside of black-owned businesses. Our third incident occurred more locally to you, some of you might remember, in Chatham, where a black boy and his friend were almost drowned in a pond in the town of Chatham, but for a bystander on the beach, he may very well have been drowned. And finally, this was just a few weeks ago, we had a matter outside a building owned by the Mashpee-Wampanoah Tribe, their language reclamation office, certain hateful language put outside that building. So Courtney is focusing on these types of cases as well as helping us with vulnerable adults. The third piece that I'd like to talk about is community engagement. When I ran for this job, I can say quite confidently, two issues resonated wherever I went, whatever community I was in. One had to do with the need for a mental health court. Mental health court is a specialty court where professionals in the field come right into the courtroom and work with a struggling defendant to try to identify what's the core issue that brings this defendant before the court, and once you identify that core issue, the professionals can work with it, and therefore we have greater chances of reducing recidivism. We're very happy to announce through the efforts of John Julian, the First Justice in Barnstable District Court, and Judge Teresa Wright, we have launched a mental health court at Barnstable. It began, I believe, in September of last year. The dockets are already filling up, as you might imagine, and even though it's Barnstable, and here we are in Harwich, which goes to Orleans, cases can be transferred to the Barnstable District Court, so people in this community can receive those services. The community engagement was the second, second issue I would say that resonated very well wherever I went. And some of you might remember that... And some of you might remember that I talked about creating a community engagement officer. That's a person whose exclusive responsibility is to be in the public every single day and report to me what is going on. And we hired Kelly Quealy, she's born and raised in Barnstable, she is our community engagement officer. And her first task that she's doing right now, which leads to my, or actually, I didn't even get to my first ask, I apologize for human trafficking. If there's room anywhere that you can think of, on any website, any literature, just to put our QR code, that would be a big help to us. So if you can think of anything, please let our office know, and we'll happily accept it. Getting to my second ask now regarding community coalition or community engagement, Kelly is setting up these community coalitions, one in every single town, we gave it a really cute name called the DA and Us. And essentially, it's gonna have somewhere between a half dozen to a dozen folks. And the hope is that they can meet quarterly at least the first year, and then maybe slide into every six months, second year thereafter. And we're looking for folks that are everyday citizens, and may have never engaged in civic service their entire life. We're looking for some local elected officials, and we're looking for some law enforcement types. And again, our hope is to keep our finger on the pulse of what's going on in any particular community. Sixteen months now in office, I've already learned the following. Over here in this town, I might have an outbreak in fraud among the elderly more so than anywhere else. Over here, the opioid crisis might be raging more than anywhere else in the Cape, and over here, hate speech in schools may have ticked up more than any other district. So again, our hope is to keep our finger on the pulse by creating all these coalitions. If anyone here listening to me tonight or watching me at home has an interest, again, please contact our office. Finally, I wanna discuss briefly the budget, our budget. You might remember when I stood before you last year, I talked about, and I learned something fortuitously. Shortly after I was elected, I went out, went out to the Northwest DA's office in North Hampton, Massachusetts, guy out there is David Sullivan. And the purpose for that meeting, as you might imagine, okay, it was great, we won, now we have to figure out how to do this. And during that meeting, he just happened to have mentioned the size of his district. His district encompasses two counties, Hampshire County and Franklin County, we happen to have three. He said the annual population was 260,000 people. That's almost us to a person, between Barnstable Dukes and Martha's Vineyard, or Nantucket, rather. And what I understood at that time, we were in the middle of fiscal year '23, my budget was $5.5 million, his was $8.5 million, or 60% larger. So you can understand and appreciate just how many more services he was able to provide his residents that I am unable to provide. We started talking about this last year, it was kinda tough being sworn in in January, and the budget season basically started the week after I arrived. But I do wanna publicly recognize Senator Seer, who was able to get us a few hundred thousand dollars over and above what we would normally get. And in this particular cycle, Senator Moran is picking up the ball, or the baton. And she's filed an amendment recently to get us a few hundred thousand dollars more once again, to try to provide better services, specifically, we're looking to hire retired CPA to help us out with some forensic accounting for fraud investigations. We're looking to hire three licensed social workers, and unfortunately, the juvenile crime has ticked way up. And for the longest time, meaning more than 15 years, we've only had one juvenile prosecutor covering five courts. We need to get another assistant DA to assist with the juvenile prosecution. So what's my ask? My ask is this, towards the end of this year, somewhere between October and December, I hope to come back. And I am asking stakeholders all across the Cape and the islands to join our efforts to increase our budget. I will come with specifics, saying this is what we're looking to do, and this is what it will likely cost. So I appreciate just trying to give you a heads up right now that I'll be coming back at the end of the year with that particular ask, so we can line up our ducks as we get into budget fiscal year '26.
Thank you, thank you for all that information, and I'm just gonna go to board members to see if they have any follow-up questions for you, Michael?
I have none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you for, for being here, and I do have a question.
Sure.
I'd love to know if you had an unlimited amount of funds, what are the first three things you would, you would bring to our.
So I touched upon briefly tonight hate speech, which quite honestly, I should probably refer to as hate incidents, because unfortunately, it spills beyond speech times. Literally, not a day has gone by where I haven't learned about something involving hate across the community, oftentimes in schools. And I know the schools are trying to do what they can with the resources they have, so if I had my wish list, I would be able to greatly supplement all the schools across the Cape and the islands, as you might imagine, that would be a very costly endeavor. In the interest of time, I'm gonna give you a second as opposed to three. But I got a question similar to this once, that it kinda put me back on my heels, because it's, you know, a unique question, and this is where I'll go with it. In a perfect world, I would have just as many courtroom prosecutors as I do community people. And to put it into perspective right now, I have 26 prosecutors. I have three people that work in the community. So if I could greatly increase the number of people that work in the community, there's a strong likelihood we would be greatly reducing any criminal incidents.
Great, well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate your strategy and your forward thinking, it's, it's, it's pretty remarkable.
Thank you, I appreciate you saying that.
Don?
I have no comments other than thanks for coming, appreciate it.
Pete?
The same, no, I appreciate your time and I appreciate your work on the human trafficking issue.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a follow-up, in terms of the human trafficking, it just seems like, and maybe it's just that it's being detected, which is better than the past, but do you think that where, you know, experiencing more of this just because of the transient type of population we have with the summer stuff, and, and people who come and begin to work, and then maybe they don't leave, and yet, I mean, I guess, I feel like we're hearing more about it, and it's such a major issue. And I, can you explain really why you think maybe we're hearing more of it?
It's always been here.
Right.
It, it's nothing new.
We're just finding it more.
Right, and it's, and I don't wanna say it's just, it's, it's everywhere, and of course, it's broken up into the sex industry as well as the labor force, but it's always been here. So what we've been able to do, and we have an upcoming training this Friday, we started with the hospitality industry, that training was a few weeks ago, this, this week we have a training for law enforcement. We're trying to train them as to what to look for, there's certain things, as you might imagine, that kinda, you know, might raise an eyebrow that something's going on here, and law enforcement is now starting to pick up on that, and we have a room for about 120 people on Friday, and we're getting close to being booked.
That's good.
Yes, it is good.
Great.
It really is.
And the, the mental health court, that sounds amazing.
It truly is, I think they started one Tuesday a month, and they're already up to two Tuesdays a month now, so, and we anticipated that, organically, it's gonna grow as it's in existence, so they're doing great stuff. We were asked to provide a particular prosecutor would handle those cases, as soon as I put it out there, a woman named Shauna Suve raised her hand very quickly, she has a background in psychology, haven't gotten her bachelor's degree in that, so so far, so good.
That's wonderful, great, thank you so much.
Appreciate it very much, appreciate your time, thank you.
Take care. New business? We're just gonna have our discussion.
We'll have a discussion.
Yeah. On annual town meeting timeline and process. So in the packet, obviously, it's our normal timeline, and we've talked about the fact that we'd like to improve the timeline, every year we talk about this, and it's hard because I think we start talking about how to start this sooner. And I don't really have the answers, but except to say that we start talking about budgets and earlier and earlier, and yet, at some point, I don't really think we can be looking for a lot of budget info before September, October, you know, I would go to you, Megan, on that.
Sure. The, the real holdup to getting you all a comprehensive budget are those outside sources, the school budgets, we don't get until January, February, the state numbers, the cherry sheets, the, how, how, what our obligation is going to be for health insurance, retirement, we don't get those numbers until early spring sometimes. So it's hard for us in administration to look at all the numbers and offer you a comprehensive budget without knowing what those are. So we work closely with the finance division to estimate, but until we have those numbers, it's really difficult to give you something to review and approve. So that, in my experience, is what the, the holdup is, and why things take longer than we'd like them to be.
Right, thank you. And also, just to, to say that, you know, we had some delays with financial information this year, but we hope going forward, we'll have that information in, in, within the timelines that we're used to having that information, so that will be helpful. But we'll just open it up to other board members in terms of any other discussion points, Don?
Thank you, ma'am chair, well, I'll get the ball rolling. There's problems with time, there's problems with information dissemination, let me start with that. I know for a fact, I talked to several department heads this year, that they were asked to start developing their budgets something like 60 days later than they had been in the last couple of years. I don't really care about the top-line budgets, because we don't control them. But I don't really view, and I'm pretty sure nobody here does, view last year's budget for any department as a jumping off point, so that it's always that or more, but that requires information too. And the amount of information I, I was not satisfied with, because we used to get line items, you know, things, so earlier was one, line items is another, and I'm just gonna put it out there, there's absolutely, it's disgraceful that the FinCom had to put a free room information request in to get some information, they're supposed to be parallel to us. They represent town meeting, and they're supposed to be able to have time to vet these things, it is not merely you bring it in 10 days before town meeting, they bless it and we move on. I'm still looking at an eight-inch binder that has about three-quarters of an inches of data in it. I can assure you, going back 20, 25 years, that that was not the case. We got, as select people, a binder that was full of information, including every single person as a line item, for a department budget, and all other accounts, because we're not supposed to be mixing these things, you can't take seven copiers and make an employee out of them. But this kind of, that kind of information takes a while to digest, and all I can say is, looking at this, I feel like we're taking a different bus route and still getting to the same location at the same time. I'm kinda looking for this to be backed up more, so that we can have more time to be able to dig into this, so that we can do our job, we have no way to be able to determine what the schools are doing, other than to set some sort of parameters that we anticipate, whatever. But getting free cash certified earlier, understanding what, what the asks are for different department heads, there's no reason why they can't start assembling that kind of information in August, in early September, in anticipation of a submission. There just isn't any reason. These are, these are the absolute drop-dead deadlines, these are not the, you don't have to, we even worry about it until you, until you get to that point, it just seemed really disjointed this year.
Pete? Okay, Jeff?
I'd like to hear what Michael has to say.
Of course. I should take Pete's cue here. Julie, first and foremost, thanks for putting this on as quick as you did, because every year is an issue, so starting now is gonna make it a little better. It would be nice to look at, this year was the first year I didn't receive a budget timeline, an actual, so this was the first year we weren't presented with the targets that we were supposed to hit, so I'd like to go back to that at very least. I would like to continue this conversation, but I would also like to give the finance committee, at least the chair, a seat at the table. Some of these deadlines, as we all figured out this year, are not realistic.
Right.
And, and we're cramming an awful lot of work into the end, and then trying to do as much work as we can, the best we can, in inadequate amount of time. To Megan's point, we're waiting for things, but we don't have to wait for everything, we can get started on a budget process a lot earlier by looking at the larger departments, without having to know what health insurance costs are, we can have an average and then plug that in and then back it out, we change things up until the last minute. But getting started early, I think, would give us a lot more time to analyze the numbers. To Don's point about what we get versus what we didn't get, we've had years where we've only had that much paper, and then we've had years where we've had that much paper. The Munis line item report, as awful as Munis is, was something that pretty much everybody requested in the end, so I think we could assume that we should add that to the list. Line two on the key deadline chart that you did, current financial assessment to the select board, town administrator, 142 days, is that the same as the five-year forecast that we've always heard of? We even heard about it this year, we just didn't get it. Is that the five-year forecast, because it's been several years since we've had an actual five-year forecast?
It is the five-year forecast, the one that's by Tuesday, the first Tuesday of October you're talking about.
Yeah.
In the past, we've given a five-year assessment, this past year, we were transitioning in finance.
Okay.
Did not have that, but that is a policy, that is the time we, we get that policy statement out.
You know, so looking at that piece, you know, for us, we could look at a five-year forecast without an up-to-date number for this year at any point, so I don't see why we wouldn't start at least looking at where, where we think we're gonna end up based on this year's budget as early as we possibly can. The, and I'm bouncing around a little bit, but warrants, final articles. We'll, we'll start talking about articles in a month, and then we already know the customary articles that are gonna be on there, so instead of cramming legal, cramming us, and then cramming finance committee, why can't we start building a warrant without numbers on it, when we make a decision to create a warrant article, so that we can start a list early on? Customary articles should just be written, because they were really just changing things, and I do know other towns don't number their warrants through all of the, the other processes, but why can't we start that process a lot earlier? I won't go on to each one of them, I think I have comments on most, the timeline just doesn't work, and, and we prove that year, year of, year after year, and it creates an incredible amount of frustration for the finance committee, and then I feel like we start butting heads. And, and Megan, to your point, there was a transition in the finance office, we all know that, most of the public was told that, the finance committee was told that, yet it's big news every time we talk about. And, and everybody needs to be a little patient when we're working from one employee that's taking over for another employee, and, and each accountant that we've had in my time here has been very different. And every time we hire a new finance director, we're behind, way behind, because they don't do things the same as the last one. Free cash, we should create a policy, we have a date that we're gonna have free cash by, because every other town had it, and I know why we didn't, I'm not gonna look, look backwards, because that will just give me a sore neck. We, we need to have this stuff early so we can make educated decisions. So this timeline is a great start, but I, I would recommend that we work with the finance committee and get their opinion.
Yeah.
And then we ramp this thing, push this thing, so that we're 30 days early until we can do a charter change, but this is, to Don's point, the drop-dead dates, those dates don't work.
No, they don't.
So thank you again for this conversation, I'll just touch on the budget message from the Board of Selectmen to the department heads, and I said this before, it's, and we do it every year, our budget message is very unrealistic. So if they have, the budget message this year really needs to say contractual obligations being one line item, contract obligations being another line item, and then we could maybe pick a percentage, but when their contractual obligations are all 3%, and we're telling them they could come in at one and a half.
Yeah.
It's, it just makes them anxious, and it makes them start deducting how many pencils they order in the budget. So I would like to have a little more thought, and then some input from some of the department heads on, on how they'd like to see it go, but I don't, that's one thing we've never had, is input. We just create a budget message, the town administrator creates a budget message, and then he comes in with a budget that's two and a half percent higher than our message, and we spend an awful lot of energy and angst getting to that point.
Yeah, well, I think your point about, you know, trying to figure out what each department has to meet first makes sense, and I also think that, and sorry, Jeff, I'm not cutting you off.
Feel free.
I just think that a couple, just while we're talking about it, I also think that we should be looking at the charter in terms of, you know, changing the need to publish the warrant in the Chronicle, because that's what really puts a crunch on, you know that, at the end of the day, is trying to get enough time to get that in. We don't need to put that in the paper when we. that in the paper when we know that we have the website, we know that we're going to have warrant books. We have multiple ways to advertise a warrant, other than having to meet a Chronicle deadline. So...
And if, if we get it to the public earlier, have it so they can pick it up 30 days before, 45 days before town meeting. I know some of the ones that actually read through the whole thing would be very happy to have that a lot earlier.
And I think that having a, you know, I had, I had mentioned this to a couple of members of FinCom, I think it would be nice for us to have a joint meeting, just to sort of talk about next year and how we make it better, how we, you know, the various pieces we've already touched upon, and also just the way we work. So I think all of those things are important. One thing I will point out about free cash is we all want those numbers ahead of time, but we did get free cash a week earlier than we got it last year. So we've always had different dates on different pieces of this. So Dana?
If that's okay. I can't talk about this as a Finance Committee member, Dana DeCosta, Chatham Road. But what I learned about this process, I learned as a Selectman back in the 90s. I learned that, from the Finance Committee, that they can live with drafts, they can live with one-liners, things like that. And what Michael raised, we talked about before, the warrant deadline is the deadline for you to get the articles, and it is to you. It's your warrant. And that deadline, once that comes, the next day, you should have a list of one-liners. I know, I used to sit in there and wait till the deadline and take the copies and make copies of them and write up the one-liners. You know, maybe it's somebody on your group that takes charge of it, maybe it's the clerk, or maybe it's whoever. But take charge of it and says, "All right, we got the one-liners." From that point on, this year you added some articles. When I was on the Board, we took away articles during that. If an article wasn't ready, if it wasn't fully baked, it wasn't timed, we took it out. If somebody didn't have it complete, we used to give the Town Administrator a pass on a couple of articles if they were big, important, we're adding a community center, we're doing something, you know, and it wasn't fully written yet. And we would give each other, because we wrote articles back then, a pass on something not being fully worded. But if it wasn't done within a week or shortly after our next meeting, it would come out, and we would start taking it out. If things hadn't gone to, out to bid and weren't going to, the bids weren't going to be ready by town meeting, we pulled them out, things like that. So we spent our time removing articles after the deadline, instead of adding. And that's maybe something that you folks consider. I just know that we, you could have one-liners to us, a lot, I mean, these are the deadlines, as Don said, these are the deadlines, but they're not, we don't have to wait till then. We could do next year's customary articles tonight. And I could even write the Finance Committee's reasons for supporting them tonight. I mean, those things can be done. A lot of articles could be written right now. I think it's up to 22 out of this 40, 50, whatever that we had. 22 of them could have been written before the deadline with an asterisk that said the actual number of the budget will be put in later. We know there's going to be a school committee article. We know there's going to be a Monomoy, that we know there's going to be a tech school, water budgets, all those things. We know those, we just don't know the number yet. And we can guess closer on the number. The Finance Committee, I know, will want to work with you any way we can to help support that. One of the asks that I would have is that the liaison to us, one member of your Board, when we get to the point where we've had our joint meeting and we've got just those last few weeks to go, that we're really communicating in terms of changes. Because you can start with a lot of preliminary stuff and have a good idea, but as the changes come in, it's easier because you're just dealing with those few little changes. But that's where the communication has to really be good between your group and my group. We are doing parallel things. We have to get to the same bus stop, but there are times when we're both off on different tracks. We just got things way too late this year to really have good, I mean, the petition articles were turned in, well, in advance, January, early February, that you can't change them. If they're certified by the clerk, they're done. Send them to us. We didn't get those, I forget the date, but we didn't get those printed until way late into the process. And, and there was a lot of wording, right? A lot of things to figure out.
On that note, any petition articles that, that get sent in should come in, in, in Word format.
Right.
So that staff doesn't have to go back and recreate the wheel.
And finished.
Right.
And it can't be changed unless it's a thing on town meeting floor. So why we don't have a copy of it the next day, I don't know. So those, those kind of things we can do for each other to help speed things up. We were working out of your packets every week. Every week, we'd look at the packet and see what was in there and say, "Oh, they're going to put in these six articles." That was, you know, you had 13 articles in by March 19th. You know, it's just too late, you know, in your warrant officially. You should, you can do, you can vote them all in or out early, and then there's just a few minor changes after that.
Well, just to follow up on that as well, with your, the Committee is looking for information, it would be helpful to this Board as well for them to ask for that information. Because
Yeah.
We're meeting every week. And so, you know, we're taking in a ton of information and we're assessing it, and it's not all, as you know, some, some of it's related to town meeting, some of it are other items for discussion. But ultimately, if you're looking for something, let us know. Let the liaison know, copy the Chair, whatever, whoever's the Chair.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, you know, knowing what you're looking for is helpful. I watched one of your meetings to hear that, you know, you were looking for the report from the fall on the early childhood education. So I went back and found it and sent it. So we're happy to give you the info. And that's what I think it's important for us to have a meeting, to both get on the same page and communicate better. I think you're right. We need to be talking more
Yeah.
And communicating better.
For the record, we did give the Finance Director and Joe, the Town Administrator, a copy of the reports that we would like to get each year and the format that we would like them in. And I think we got most of those. But it, it was just the whole time crunch this year that, that really
It was. It was a big time crunch.
That really did us in. Back when I was a Selectman in the 90s, "All articles to be inserted in the May town meeting shall be submitted in final form in writing to the Selectmen, no later than 4:00 PM on the second Friday in January." So you actually have a couple of weeks or better, longer than we had back then. We did, I remember sitting there once, and Alan Thompson walked in with a napkin with an article on it and said, "Put this in right," because he was just before the deadline, and he had been at lunch somewhere and brought it in and thought of it and get it in. And nothing was written, so it wasn't in final form. But he ended up developing it between then and the next meeting that we had and was able to have it out then. So we gave very few exceptions to that deadline. And once we did that, and once it be, we put it, you know, you should put it right in the budget message that the deadline's going to be enforced this year. If you're not in, your article's not going forward, or something like that. Just food for thought from my point of view.
Thank you.
Like I said, it was, when I was a Selectman, I went to the FinCom and said, "What can we do to help you?" Because we heard this same sort of stuff back in the 90s. And it was that they, the Select Board was trying to wait too long to have a finished product to give to the Finance Committee by the deadline, instead of a few drafts right up. I mean, there's a two-week gap between when you get the articles and when you're supposed to give them to us. If you get them one day, why can't we have them the next day, as far as just a draft goes, one-liners, stuff to get working with. Just food for thought.
Yeah. Thank you. Jeff?
I'll let Linda go.
Oh, Linda, sorry.
That's okay. And then Mark.
That must mean I've lost so much weight you can't see me.
I was going to say that.
Linda Sebula's speaking, one for myself, and then I'll make some comments for the Bylaw Charter Review Committee. I also sat on the Finance Committee for six years and this Select Board for six years. And I remember the tons of information we used to get in advance. I remember when, if the deadline was four o'clock, it was the full written article, not a one-liner, article on, you know, walking down road with chicken. It was the full article. It was everything. If it, and we have gotten woefully away from that. I can tell you that from the Bylaw Charter Review Committee, we didn't get any articles to review, as in the charter, we're required to do so, until the end of March. There was no input we were going to have if something was out of line with other Bylaw articles or other charter language. So if there had been anything wrong, we would have been bringing it to town meeting floor. That's outrageous. It doesn't do any good for the public. I'd also like to say that when I sat on the Finance Committee and when I was on Select Board, we would have a draft budget that would say $60 million. That's Draft One. Draft Two was 62 million. What changed? What would come with that, Megan, and I hope you go back with this, is 60 million, plus a million for this, minus 2 million for that, plus 3 million got me to 63 million. You know, when you're looking at a draft that has a number, you have no idea what has changed. And then you're sitting there trying to go through, "Okay, well, there's 50,000 of it. Here's another little, and did I add it up?" I mean, last year, there were places where the reports didn't even add. So it doesn't help. But I think that the presentation of information, Madam Chair, could be greatly improved and transparent and understandable. Again, if this is Draft One, and they should all be dated, then you get, it changed from here to here, and why. Then you get the next draft. Okay, you can follow it. And I think that there, I, I happen to be married to a Finance Committee member. He spent hours getting, "What draft do I have? Where did it change? Can I figure it out?" Rather than think, sitting back and saying, "Does this make sense? What should we be questioning?" Instead, he's sitting there trying to find the nits and lice. That's kind of foolish. And it doesn't do either Committee any good, and it doesn't do the public any good either, because it looks like everything's being done behind closed doors or under the table, and we have no idea what's going on. So I think that it would behoove you to really get this straightened out and get this information, more and more information, even if it's a draft. I think we all understood the word "draft." And I get it, there's some big numbers that come through, pension, health insurance, all the other insurances. Yeah, it should have a, it should be in red saying, "Draft." We get it. But all the rest of it, it really has got to come much early. We got to, you guys got to have to do a better job. We have to go back to the old ways where things actually got done on time.
So when you say the old ways, because I think back to Michael's point earlier, because I've been on the Board, I think at this point, it will be seven years or six years, too, right?
With a break.
And, yeah, exactly. Yeah. Which was smart on my behalf. And I'm just saying, to your point, in those years, and to Michael's earlier point, every year, I feel like it was different.
Yeah.
So there were different players, there were, so I, I don't really feel like you can say anybody's been uniformed year after year on any Select Board, unless you've had either, you know, the same Finance Director, the same Town Administrator, all of these things. We've had a lot of different changes, and we're not unlike any other town. There's a lot of different moving parts. And so I, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm agreeing with you. I'm just saying that the history of it, even in my span of time, has been that each year, it's really been different. So...
And we've never called anyone to account. There are certain basics, and I understand that people do things differently. But there are certain basics of communication and information providing that don't change from person to person. And if we have financial people or we have Town Administration that has to reinvent the wheel every single time a new person is there, that's not necessary either. But thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I think that...
And, and the Bylaw Charter Review Committee is certainly happy to work with you on charter changes. Is there wording that can be changed, dating that can be changed? Let us know. We'll go rip into it, and we'll come up with different ideas, stuff that will work for everyone. We stand ready to help.
Yeah, no, thank you. And I think that there's a couple of things right away that we know we can start working on. You know, even, even the date and time of town meeting.
Let, let me know.
Yeah. I will, definitely. I also hope that we are able to, as we've been building the website, and I know that Sarah has done great things on town meeting presentations in Orleans in her past. And I would love to see us be able to use our website more effectively as well. They had different, you know, presentations on articles to explain to people to understand passing it would mean this and not passing it would mean this.
Yeah.
And I, I think that's really helpful to have somebody explain it to you versus only reading. You know, reading it can be confusing, the language alone in some of these articles.
What I do want to say as kudos is having the citizens petitions up front, rather than Wednesday night at midnight, where nobody cares at this point because we're all sound asleep.
Right.
I think having them up front, there was a much more robust, even discussion on those citizens articles. So I think that was a good move.
Yeah.
I disagree.
Mike?
Maybe, maybe we could limit it to two petitions this year.
Mark Kelleher, West Howard, just Citizens. Orleans, Chatham, and Yarmouth have 6:00 PM start times. Consider that for next year, that one hour difference, we may be able to get through in one night. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? Jeff?
Just one last comment. I'm now on the State Finance Committee, and a lot of towns are trending to start to put a town meeting articles, a town meeting documents in one folder on their website
Mm-hmm.
So that anybody can get these. These are all public documents, and there's, they're also working documents. We need them all to work with as soon as they come out. They don't, you know, so when the audit's out, when the capital plan's done, when the report from the CPC is done, those kinds of things get put into this folder right away. And that's what a lot of the towns are doing now. It just might be a trend where we're getting new website and something new to go after. That might be something we want to...
Anywhere we can centralize info, I think, is helpful. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, you know, I, I'd first like to say that I absolutely agree with everything everybody said, all the way down the line. But I have, I have a few thoughts and a few notes that I had taken while everybody was speaking. It's encouraging to feel that everybody wants the same thing. That, that to me is ground zero. We all want to receive information earlier so that we can do a better job for the town in getting this, what I would consider to be probably the most important part of our year, and we get it right. So I'm, I'm encouraged by that. I also feel being the liaison to the FinCom as a freshman was a, a big mistake. Clearly Dana did, too.
[laughing]
I'd like Bill Galvin to publish that. I got to tell you, coming into this for the first time, while trying to get all my information square and getting it, I guess, and, and let me go back, the narrative of late and not late, I, I heard two different narratives the, the whole time, like, "We're on time, we're getting it on time, we've gotten it later in the past, no, we haven't." I don't know, because this was my first time going through this. So my benchmark is this year. But, but to be a freshman liaison to the FinCom for town meeting is, is probably not a good idea for anyone going forward. It was a lie, and I'll be the first to admit it. And...
For the record, it was Mary. It wasn't me who gave you that.
I was going to say, I don't hold Madam Chair responsible for that.
Way to have her back.
Yeah. But I...
I would just say, especially with that group.
Yeah.
Trying to, I'm trying to speed through this. I would say that if, I, I would, I would love to stay the liaison, because I think I'll do a much better job going forward the second time. So, well, thanks, Dana. Print that, too, Bill. I would also say that, from a communication standpoint, it wasn't poor communication, it was no communication. Like, I, I feel like it was two teams trying to figure out how to get to the same place at one time. And by any standard or measure, that is suboptimal, and that is not the way anybody, any business, any company, any town should be doing business. So in closing, I mean, all I'll say is, we have to do a better job of collaboration with the... I mean, all I'll say is, we have to do a better job of collaboration with the, with everybody who is involved in this, which is everybody. And I love the idea of bringing in department heads to talk about their budgets early on, get it, get it, get the pulse of where our department heads are. The Freedom of Information Act request, I think, is, is obnoxious. I, I don't, I don't for the life of me understand, and I do want to find out why that, that ended up happening. But the finance committee should get everything they asked for, whether it be by us or through, or through administration. But I, I hope this isn't the last discussion we have of this in, in, in the near future so that we can set up a strategy and a plan to have a better system to move forward for at least what I would say is my year two.
Yeah. And I think, I think all of what we talked about here tonight is helpful. And I also think that it's going to be helpful for our goals and objectives discussion as well. So.
Hundred percent.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have one specific thing that has to do with a rather large issue that we went through this year. Through you, Kathleen, can you give me an idea of how long from when it is you close your books and send something to the state for certification of free cash? What kind of lag time there is by the time that they certify it?
Kathleen Barrett, Finance Director. This year is going to be an exception. We have two reps. One is the regular rep and one is the supervisor, who's probably familiar with the terms, Katie Scopoletti and Tom Guilfoyle. Katie is out on maternity leave. She will not be back until, I think, late October. There's going to be a three to four week delay in getting free cash submitted and approved.
That's not what I asked. And when you submit it, how long does the state take to come back with a certification?
At least this year, it'll be three to four weeks.
But we're the one who gives them the number, correct?
We submit all the documentation. They do their process in reviewing what's called the combined balance sheet. They look at all the cash reconciliations. The whole year's financials. From that, they make their calculations based on everything that's submitted, what our free cash amount would be. We do not tell them what it is. They actually calculate it for us based on all the adjustments. There's a lengthy, lengthy checklist, a questionnaire, or a view period that we go through with them. And based on that is how it's all calculated.
And I'm certainly sympathetic to all the chaos that you kind of inherited in personnel in that office. But having said that, we were getting a number floated to this board sometime around December, and I have to go back and look at my notes, that was roughly double what got certified.
Free cash number?
Free cash number.
I was, and I know.
It was a working number. Wasn't, I don't think it came from you either.
I don't think, well, I'll, I'll be honest, there was questions. I was asked to estimate free cash and I did not feel comfortable ever doing that. I never will. There's, there's no way of knowing. We can do like a check to make sure we've included things and is a reason, we do a reasonable as check, but I will never give a number forward because things could happen. There could be, you know, concerns, questions, something that gets missed. So, but there was never going to be more than double our free cash.
I'd say that.
I don't know where that came from.
We didn't come from you. I'm telling you that we had discussions about that in December. I'll get you a date because it came with a decimal point. It just seemed like when we actually got the certification, we, we were really caught short about what we could afford to be able to pay for with free cash. That changed everything. And it necessitated us to kind of rethink the whole budget on the fly.
Well, I, I mean, the biggest impact on the free cash was the capital. We did not, it did not impact our operating budget in any way, but it was very, very impactful for capital. I think it's going to be a continuing trend. I think if anything, you know, not to be a wet blanket, but I don't think it is going to go anywhere but down. The budget is very, very tight. There is no great deal of, of like cushioning in our operating budget, which, you know, is, is the board's choice. And it's, it's a very financially responsible choice in the sense that, you know, you're not being, you know, over, you know, burdening the taxpayer. But we also have higher revenue estimates. And when you have the, you know, a few years ago, there was a great deal more free cash. But that was due in part to a very low local receipts estimate because coming on a COVID, you know, to try to be very financially responsible and be very conservative, which is, you know, which no one would ever question. And because things improved, you know, it was very, very beneficial to the town. So there was a great deal more revenue than was forecasted, which was terrific. But now that things are a little bit different and we have more, you know, asks of our budget and we need more funding sources, those, those estimates are much higher than they were. So the corresponding gap, you know, that's just the way it works out.
Thank you for pointing out the fact that, you know, we, we don't request higher numbers of free cash.
No.
It is what it is, once verified by the state.
Yeah. And it, you know, and it's a, it's a very, very thorough, thorough process. We have to completely close our books, do complete financial statements and its analysis of everything that we do. If anything, the state has been a great deal more thorough. You know, there's look backs to prior year to see if it's reasonable year to year. You know, we have conversations and meetings with them so that they have an understanding of, you know, some of the challenges we're facing, why there's trends. You know, we really try to work, you know, in concert with them. And of course, our goal, you know, is to, you know, finish in very timely so the rest of the town can move forward and, you know, have enough time to make good decisions and to take all these things into account. That's our goal. In a normal circumstance, you know, I think the turnaround town from the DOR would be a little sooner, probably like a couple of weeks. But now they're short staffed and they set the expectation, she set the expectation before she went on maternity leave. She's like, I just want you to know, I know it's months away, but it's going to be at least double the time in the turnaround to get these things certified. She's like, just set realistic expectations with your board and your committees so that you can plan accordingly. And, you know, obviously that's our goal. We're going to start much sooner, but we are still facing tremendous challenges in the treasurer's office.
Okay.
So I just want to set realistic expectations. You know, we, we are, you know, trying to do everything we can. And now having a full year, we have a great deal more of a head start, you know, and to address like some of the budget challenges. Yes, they were incredibly challenging and we were doing three things at once.
No, and we appreciate all your hard work. So.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's not, you know, it's just that, you know, the budget process was incredibly stressful on our end as well. We certainly would like to do it better on our side as well. And we are completely open to.
I think that moving forward, if we're having better conversations.
Most definitely.
More communication and a more organized approach. I mean, you know, we have talked about this in the past about improving the process, but I think we really need to, you know, come up with at least like a top 10 of what we can do, what we can do earlier, what we can do more collaboratively, where we can put information. So I think if we have these meetings in the, you know, the next few weeks, it really, you know, let's just say by the end of June, we would have all these different meetings. We have our goals and objectives that we had to cancel for tomorrow night because of the organization needed for State Troopers Culver's funeral and wake. So we'll be scheduling that. We also have a stakeholder meeting we need to do for Brooks Academy, but then we need to get a finance committee meeting and, and this conversation moving. So I think, I think we're on the right path.
Yeah. And the accounting, we would be happy to meet with you and, and look at some of the reports and things. Unfortunately, a lot of what we did in this budget is all manual. It's all on Excel. It's all just, literally just spreadsheet after spreadsheet, trying to keep it straight. So, you know, there is no great software. We don't push buttons. It's all manual.
No, it's a lever. It is.
So we'd like to do something a little bit easier too.
All right. And well, so will we, you know, we'll certainly include you in that conversation, obviously. So.
Terrific. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, board members? Michael?
Just a final thought. The, I mentioned a policy on free cash, and I think that that's something we have to revisit sooner rather than later. And then, because that is one of our biggest planning tools. And then a statement that was just made by the finance director, and it's not on the agenda tonight, so I don't want to dive into it. I would like to understand more because I think it's incumbent on this board to fix anything that's broken. But the comment tremendous challenges and treasures still facing, that's concerning to me. And I don't want to go any deep into the summer, anywhere deep into anything with tremendous challenges. So if there's something we need to fix.
Right.
Then it's incumbent upon us to fix it.
Right. And which is why I think having those conversations are important. Are we good on that topic? If we can.
Yeah.
Everybody good? Yeah. So we can move on to B. Jeff?
I move that we vote to approve a request for a hawkers and peddler's license for association to preserve Cape Cod, 482 Main Street Dennis, to sell plants on June 7th, 2024, outside at 9 Sisson Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, Megan.
I move that we vote to approve a request for a 2024 seasonal common vicular's license renewal for Sunday School IC Holding LLC DBA Sunday School Ice Cream 606 Route 28.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Old Business, and so I just mentioned this, trying to determine a date that works for everybody. I would say it would be great to have that meeting, seeing that we're going to do goals and objectives, hopefully either next week or the following week. What are dates that look good for board members if, if we were to do something the first week in June? And then we would need to make sure that the other appropriate parties. So we should really come up with a couple of dates. If we could stick to Wednesdays.
On the way on the 29th.
29th of May.
May.
Madam Chair, do you, do you feel like the full board needs to be involved in this? And given that it's going to be a plan, the commission's going to be involved, the committee's going to be involved, the board of selectmen is going to be involved, the town administrator is going to be involved, maybe department heads?
I don't think, I don't think the whole board needs to be involved if they don't want to be.
If we stick to two, we don't have a quorum, and then we can get a report back of how we're going to proceed?
If, if the board is good with, because the last time we talked about that, we talked about a meeting with all of us. So I'm fine with not having all of us there if board members are good with that. Don?
I think Jeff was interested in I'm the liaison. So that would lead me to this second thought because he wanted to have a discussion with me that I thought was going to be with us if we were going to hold it as a regular meeting in terms of who the stakeholders were going to be. But at a minimum, I know Lynn has submitted some people to it. And if, if we go that route, then if we can be allowed to expand to what we think we need to hear, it would be helpful.
Michael?
Yeah. And my thought is, I don't believe all of us need to be there. This is a fact finding and a report back to the board on, on, on next steps. So it's an informational gathering and trying to get everyone together. So I don't need to be there.
But that was my point, because we could expand out the constellation of people that we could hear from rather quickly if it was just two of us that were doing this rather than it being a full agenda item with an attached list of people.
I'm fine with not being present at it either. So I don't know how Pete feels.
Not an issue.
I think I know how Pete feels.
Not an issue.
And if it's okay with the board, I'd like, and you as well, I'd like to be part of that.
That's what I was suggesting, is you and I.
I just want to be clear on that. I'd like to be part of that meeting as well.
Yeah.
And we have Lynn?
Yeah. So Lynn, if you wanted to speak for your committee.
Hi, Lynn Zalizak, Brooks Academy Commission. Yes, you know, anytime you guys want to meet, I am not available June 5th through June 10th. That's the only thing there. But any other time, I'll switch things around if I need to, whatever.
But we also have all the others to, to consider. So what might not be.
I can see Jeff putting his survey monkey out.
[laughing] It would work.
No, I.
Wilson.
Sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I was going to say, Lynn, thank you for putting together the comprehensive list of people that you feel should be part of this.
Well, it involves basically all major departments here. And also, we definitely need the tenants, the historical society to be involved as well. They are impacted by everything.
I'd like to just, if I could suggest this, I'm not sure at this point, and, and I'm, I'm going to make sure I'm absolutely crystal clear on this. The presentation the garden club did was second to none. And I feel that their involvement in this whole process is incredibly important, and it will just make the end product just that much better.
Oh, agreed.
I'm not sure that for this meeting, they need to be there at this point in time.
Sure.
And I only say that, again, to be very clear, because the less people we have to try to work around to get at that table, the, the easier and the quicker we're going to be able to get to that table.
You mean, the more we might, we might get done?
We might even just get to the starting line.
There we go.
So I, I know Linda was, was interested in being there as well as that.
Representing the.
Representing historic, yeah, historic society. Who else, Don, do you think?
I think Joe had a whole list.
Yeah, there was a contract administration issue in that too, but how the contractor got picked. We definitely need some staff. Well, we need that list before we can begin to try to formalize a date.
I think, I think we, you know, Joe had a good list of stakeholders that should be there. And so they would obviously include Lynn's group, the board that we were talking about. So if that you two are going to be the.
Can he and I get that as soon as possible so that we can look that over?
Yeah. So, so we will, that's why this is on the agenda, to have a conversation about when we're going to have this meeting. And ultimately, all of the appropriate stakeholders should be at that meeting.
If I may, I think also it's important that we have ADA there as well, since that is a critical issue to how the building will be fixed for the future.
That's not the committee. We have an ADA officer.
Understood.
Yeah, that's, Megan, Megan is our ADA person. So.
Why don't I suggest just kicking this back to town administrator?
Yeah.
He can send out an e-vite and they can.
Yeah. So that's what I was saying is that Joe has a list of stakeholders, all we're looking for. And this, having just two of you now makes it easier in terms of dates. So let's bring this back, which I will have my follow-up meeting tomorrow. Well, I'm, I'm not sure Joe's sick. So, but we will have our agenda meeting and we will figure out dates and you all will be copied. So we'll figure it out.
Just remember, I'm not available the 5th through the 10th.
Right. And obviously share that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Before you move on, could I, could I request, you know, whenever it's available, a copy of the engineering study that was done on that building?
Sure.
Thank you.
Or maybe we could just put that in the Dropbox so that, because we should all look back at that.
Fine.
Okay. And then town administrators report.
So there are two contracts that were approved in the last week or two. One is for brush grinding at the disposal area. That was a 30B contract done for under $50,000. And that was awarded to S&amp;J Esco in the amount.
May I ask a question on that or a suggestion? Can we work with the DPW director? We have mountains of wood chips at dump that eventually we're going to have to pay to get rid of because we're going to run out of space. Would it be appropriate to maybe offer that to the local landscapers? I know right now you can go down there with a shovel or a pitchfork and fill up the back of your truck or a trailer or a Ford. And not many people are going to do it on that level. But I do foresee landscapers picking it up in dump trucks if we can just load it into the dump truck for them. It might be a way to get rid of some of that stuff before we have a fire or before DEP tells us we have to get rid of it.
I will suggest that for sure. So that contract was in the amount of $24,000. And then the second contract was for the Smart Fill Fuel Management System at Cranberry Valley Golf Course. This was to replace their obsolete gas boy Top Cat system. And this one was in the amount of $33,046.75. There is a third for the Harbor Master. This went to the finance committee for a reserve fund transfer. Unfortunately, the primary patrol boat's engine is no longer working and needed to be replaced unexpectedly. And three quotes were sought and received the low quote from NOS at Marine in the amount of $23,394. And then I have two employment announcements to make. One is for a program aid. One is for a program aid for the Cultural Affairs Department. This is a part-time position not to exceed 19 hours per week, and that is paid out of the revolving fund, and that has been offered to a Mary Pat Maloney, who will start June 3rd. And we have a part-time per diem town chef for the Council on Aging. Mr. Larry Knowles has accepted the offer and actually has just started last week.
Oh, great, thank you. Select Board Report, oh, wait, correspondence. Do you have any correspondence?
I do not have any correspondence in my packet.
Okay. I don't know why that's, uh, Select Board Report.
No. Yes, I guess, I won't say no and then ask something. Just quickly looking at the Gulf Fuel article or project, it talks about the 2017 Article 18 Carp Arm Project. Could we get an update on that article, if there's anything remaining and the status of it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, Don?
Nothing.
Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a heads up to administration, and John Ketchum had brought a long time ago the broadband topic to this board, and I know through my own little research, there's been a lot of things that have happened with broadband on Cape Cod, so I, I think I'm gonna in the future ask administration by way through Madam Chair here, maybe as an agenda item, to bring back that topic so that we can understand where, where the town's been going with that over the last couple of months. I know John's met with, met with the TA, met with Sarah, and just want an update on that. Thank you.
Michael? I just want to say again, thank you to Michael Ford for rallying and returning to his position as moderator on our second evening, and he was in rare form, and I'm grateful that we, we were able to have him back to close our, our second.
I move we adjourn. One of us is seconding.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.